Called to order the special meeting for CDB's Grand Forks for Monday, February 24th, 2020 is now five o'clock. City Clerk, please call, roll.
Mayor Steve Gander, Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grassel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Better.
Here.
Dell Holmes, Tim Riappel.
Here.
Tim Johnson.
Here.
Mark Demers.
Present.
Does term. Carson, number one, consider adoption of resolution number 20-02-16 approving the appointments of election judges for the president, president primary election.
Move.
Moved by Grassel, second by Demers. Any questions or discussion? CNN, roll call, please.
Better.
Yes.
Riappel.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Holstead.
Yes.
Grassel.
Yes.
Demers.
Yes.
Can I make one comment there then? So if you guys have noticed that.
She changed it, she retold us.
No, but in the first board that I will be a election judge there, Megan was desperate for meeting the minimum requirements, so she recruited me just to fill in for that, and it is in the evening, so that means I will not be at the March 3rd council meeting. I will be attending that election judge stream.
Will that be for the general as well?
No, it's just the presidential primary election.
Because I guess I did, I mean, I didn't ask the question, but I did have a concern is if something does happen with elections or something that day, what hap, I mean, you kind of, I know Megan does a lot of the work, but you're the city administrator too, so what would happen?
At the, well, at the primary part of it, the, the election judge in charge would be Megan, so at that particular point, then she would be making those, those decisions, since I would be filling in then as a, as an election judge.
Here. Rodney, did you have something?
I was just gonna, I didn't understand his question, I can also see, and I could place them as an election judge.
Again, motion was approved. Move on to number one, discussion on recreation facilities plan, consider the sales tax percentage. Reed, I guess we'll start out with you, sir, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. David, if you have anything you want to jump in on right away, too, feel free to, to kind of get the conversation started. In your packet, um, excuse me, I may be fighting with a cough a little bit tonight, I'm dealing with a cold, so I apologize for that up front, but in your packet, I included some information about the projects we've discussed and different sales tax rates. Of course, we were here about a month ago and passed a resolution for a 2% increase to send that to the state legislature. We did so and have had that received or sent to the tax committees, but have not submitted a bill or had a bill written for that yet. And of course, locally, there's been some maybe hesitation to that, some of the leadership to whether or not that's something that we as a group kind of are unified on and want to move forward. So, and David's had some discussion with some of our local representatives, I have as well, and really, we're looking at, hopefully, trying to get a consensus out of this group tonight on, on what percent or if, at what percent we'd like to try to move forward a bill with the state this week still. And February 27th, David being the deadline, that we need to have a bill written and submitted to the committees to hopefully get a hearing with them. So I gave you a packet that has a few different scenarios laid out in it of what, you know, what kind of projects potentially could happen within some of the scenarios we've talked about. Of course, the 2% being that all four projects are fully funded and, and it's clear that way what could happen. I gave a one and a half percent scenario or even a 1% scenario at a different, couple of different year ranges. And the document I gave you just as I walked in tonight, that has some comments from our first community forum meeting that was on last Thursday, the 20th of February. In summary of that, I think we had a good turnout of people participating in it. It was a pretty informal meeting in that we had information to share, that people could just take and take a handout and read it and walk away with it if they wanted to, to get some, really a bulk of what we're discussing in their hands, so they had something tangible to be able to read and hopefully understand. And we had some of our staff there to ask, to answer questions or receive feedback. Thank you to the council members, those of you that came. I really appreciate you being there to support it. I think in general, the feedback from that meeting was, was positive in that there seems to be a lot of interest in the projects. I would say we're a long ways away still in some cases, and, and even as a community, having a great understanding of what we're discussing and, you know, kind of to what degree everybody wants to see some of these things happen. When I say that, I mean, some, some maybe the feeling is, is that we can't afford to do everything that we're looking at and that we just need to focus on fixing what we've got. And maybe others are saying, even to the other end of that spectrum are saying, we're not thinking big enough on this, and they want to be proven why we don't need, say, for example, four ice sheets in town. We've said that, I've said that at a meeting that I don't, but I haven't given statistics to show why I think that's the case. So there are some people asking questions like that. So I think just kind of summarizing, roundabout summarizing, and there's a few comments in that community forum that kind of shed light to some of those questions. And then the other side of that document I gave you has some construction comparisons from other projects in, in our region that have taken place in the last, say, 10 years. And that's something that I think we'll try to get posted out on, on our website and on social media for other people to get a look at too, just to get maybe a little bit of an understanding of what we're talking about doing within our arenas and kind of how that could lie within the scope of what other communities have been able to do, whether that be Crookston or, or Grand Forks, or even the most recent one is the, the new arena that was built in, about at Minnesota. I think you see that, you know, at today's construction dollars and the estimates where they're at, the projects that we're talking about, for the, the size of the buildings that we're talking are, are, you know, in a way, they're right in line with what other communities would be looking at if they were trying to build on today's construction dollars too. So there's a lot, a lot of information out there. I guess at this point, I'll just leave it up to any questions. If you guys are looking for anything from me, if you want a specific question answered, I'd feel, I'd love to try to answer it for you.
I guess the only thing I would like to add is, at a minimum, what I'd like to see coming out of this is, depending what we do with the, the sales tax question and where we go with that, the one thing we, we do need to keep in mind is that we are living on borrowed time with both of the ice plants for both the VFW arena and the Civic Center. So at, at a minimum, I think we need to have some sort of idea or plan in place of what we're going to do with those, because there, there is the real possibility that they could fail within the next, you know, unknown period of time, and they are obsolete to the point that parts are not available for them.
May I ask any comments at this time? Have any questions for Reed or David? What have they just gone over?
Thing that I want to, I want to make sure that we understand too is that, you know, the projects that are in front of us that we originally approved before, I know that we started out with the study of the arenas and the conversion, you know, and came back and discussed, you know, if we're going to do something, maybe we should look at something larger and that would encompass a lot of the, the community and the community involvement and activities that we do have in this city. And I know that direction that, you know, Reed took from us to look at these things and look at, you know, Lefebvre Park and baseball and the Greenway on top of the, the arenas. And I, I think that, you know, the word that we're getting and the understanding that we're, I don't know if they're the rumor mill and discussion of, you know, talking with our representatives about, you know, maybe we need to look at it and say, okay, well, is 2% going to be passed out of committee? Are we going to get a hearing? Do we need to go back and look at this? We need to make a decision. We need to make, you know, choices that, you know, that we can make sure that we're taking care of the main project, or are we going to take care of two projects? You know, or we're going to take all four, and that's, you know, rehashing what, you know, Mr. Murphy and all of us and Reed have discussed over the last couple of weeks of what we can do. And, and I think, I'd like to, I know you're short on time, Mayor, so I'd like maybe hand it off to you, maybe give us your words, so I know that you have to be somewhere at six o'clock, so.
Thanks, Ms. President. And I don't know who else may have spoken to our legislative delegation in St. Paul, but I have reached out to both of our two elected officials, Representative Keel, Senator Mark Johnson. And I asked them a question, each of them, and the question was, I know that you will carry this forward valiantly. I know you'll carry this forward very well and passionately and bring it forward. The question is, please don't tell me what you think I want to hear. Tell me what we need to hear. What's your sense from, from running it up the flagpole with several of your key members and both in the tax committee and other ones that would be real pivotal in this effort? And the response I got in both cases was, this has no chance. The way that we have sent it, the way that it's worded, this won't pass. And there was more detail added to that that I should probably leave if anyone wants to have individual conversations with them, because some of it was, was spoken to me in, in some confidence. But again, they said, if this is what you have given us, if this is what you want us to move through committee best we can and on, we'll do it. But as presented, it can't pass. And pressed with what part of it, it was just, first of all, the amount was more than historically they've seen. And I couldn't get a, a clear picture if that was 100% with the 2% or the 30-year term of it. It might have been a combination of both, but it, for sure, the 2% was beyond what they thought was appropriate. And the other thing that they wanted to see and historically have seen this season, they said, this doesn't have the feel of your swimming pool effort, which had massive community buy-in with fundraising. And I said, but you know, that's the change in the legislation, in the, in the state statute that says we've got to clear the hurdle of legislate it first and then bring it to our voters. And they said, yep, that's true, and yet, that's what our people are going to be looking for. That sense that your community has bought into it, we're going to have to come with a little more detailed fundraising goal and fundraising plan, you know, put some skin in the game, all of that sort of thing. And that's what they're going to be looking for, along with adjusting the amount that we're asking for. So that's the, the response that I've received from them. So specifically, if the question was regarding the, the conversation with our representative and senator, that's the crux of it, with some detail left out, that they just said, you know what, I'll say these things, and yet, let's just not be too detail-specific about those. But by all means, each one of us individually have a talk with them and, and get a sense of it, but that's what they will tell you with some detail added.
Anything else you want to go over, sir?
Um, I think by now, folks know what I would love to see is something in that range of 1% for around 15 years. I think folks know that would be my preference. If it's a 15-year repayment, that could initially show a little longer period, because we would anticipate that sales tax revenue would go up over time. So if it shows initially a number longer than 15, but with an honest estimated payout or payback of 15 years. And I had some ideas of why that is, and I can take just a minute or two, I might as well go through that. You know, each 1% sales tax revenue brings a million or so dollars, and so 2% would bring 2 million per year in sales tax revenue. We might say for 30 years, but it would not run 30 years. It would be between 20 and 25 probably with the normal increases that we would see. So if you feel that half of that would be covered by folks outside of our community, you get it down into that range of where the individual family of four might expect to see around $240, $240 a year, if, if indeed it would carry to, to each individual family in roughly the same amount. So that's an awful lot of money for families to carry. 2% equals almost 40% of our tax levy. You've seen us sort of sharpen the pencil down to about 1% of our tax levy every year. We're haggling between, hmm, 5%, 6%, 4%. Well, that amount is a little over $50,000, because it's a percentage of our current levy, but this is a different percentage. This is a percentage of sales tax revenue or of all revenue, which would carry to a 1% sales tax. So the 1% here is a million dollars, plus or minus. So it's a huge sum of money. And so I think to see that amount of increase would be, again, at least a 20% year-over-year increase or maybe even higher, depending on if we had less of it coming in from outside the area in terms of sales. And 2% would bring, as Reed, you and I have spoken, and by the way, Reed, you've been so professional through all of this, very forthright, very, you know, just doing whatever we ask of you and also representing the people, the, the people that your department serves. But 2% bringing in an additional 2 million a year on top of the 2 million that we have in our general fund expenditure, brings it up close to $4 million a year spent on park and rec, which is almost equal to police and fire combined on an annual expenditure. And, and really, as a community priority, that, that, that I struggle with that. As mayor of, of all of our people and saying, you know what, we build quality of life on public safety, public works, public utility, and, and we want really good recreation programs, but let's really pay attention to these things for the building blocks of a, of a good community. 2% would take us out of parity with Grand Forks, which I've said before. Already at 1%, we're a wee bit higher than Grand Forks, but almost equal. The additional one raises it higher. With that, consumer habits could change, and it would be very hard to recruit individual businesses, a little bit harder with that, that tax disparity that would be there. If we look at recent arena projects around the area and how they were funded, vast majority of the costs have been paid by donations, naming rights, sponsorships, federal flood relocation money and so on. You know, the Little Ralph is a beautiful arena in Thief River Falls, largely by donated money. The Icon, almost completely donated money. The Cullen Arena in Moorhead used less than 3 million in local tax dollars. The Phase 2, 5 million plus mostly from donations. And the vast majority of the new arena in Badet came through donations, as well as the, the relocation of the Crookston arenas. A lot of that was federal fun, uh, funding through the flood relocation. So we haven't really seen an arena throughout this area, the lion's share of it built with tax money. And the reason is, it's awfully nice for an amenity like this to see everybody step up and say, you know what, we want this, we're going to make this happen. And I'd love to be part of that effort in the formal fundraising process. But it's kind of unprecedented to go such a large amount of tax dollars toward an arena project throughout the territory here. And so whatever the group decides, I, I think it is an appropriate thing to consider revising the wording of the bill that we want to put through the legislature to give it a chance to succeed. And, and I think we're going to have to be really intentional about fundraising, and we're going to need to bring in a professional for that purpose under a contract, set a fundraising goal and, and go about doing it. And, and I'm fully convinced that we'll get it done. We'll add that to the bottom line amount that we can raise through a sales tax. I think we can want to take care of through the fundraising, commit, say, a million dollars to the Stouse Park renovation, and put up a second field, well, well-drained with lights, some bleachers, you know, figure out the cost of those things, make the original field a little nicer if we need to. I think we can do those two projects. And so people know, please know this is, the reason I would, I would push for something like this is not about my own personal bias. I'm really trying to put forward a package that we can get approved, that, that really we can get approved. We can get it approved by the legislature, and we can get it approved by the voters, and we can get it built. And it might look like I'm an obstacle, but I may be among the strongest proponents and supporters of this effort anywhere in our community. You know, I'm really excited about renovating the boat ramp area, but that's got to come off between the confusion and the cost. It's not workable into this plan. You know, I use the rec trails several times a week, and yet those, the maintenance of those trails have to, I believe, come out of this proposal between the confusion and the total cost factor. The only question is, can we, can we some way put the Stouse field improvements in or out? I'm afraid we will confuse the voters at the ballot box with, with multiple items, yes or no, even though they're under one heading. Carla, thank you for that clarification. I'm, I'm afraid we might confuse the voters if they see the two items, and, and they're very patient, they're very alert, they're very aware, but nobody's as close to this thing as we are. And so that's, that's my thought. I'd love to hear anyone else's thought. But again, I, I appreciate everybody who's put the work in to get us to this point. I really do think, though, as I looked through the packet that came back out, and thanks for rescinding all of that, that we're probably going to have to go a little bit back to the drawing board as for our priorities also on how we spend the money. And, yeah, I have it right here, because otherwise, inside of this plan, if we do make an adjustment, we won't hit all of our priorities inside of this plan. But I think there's tons of room to do that and time to do it, and get a new arena that we're proud of, get the VFW converted to year-round indoor sport facility. I believe with fundraising, with a more limited tax revenue, we're going to be able to do all of those things.
Can you give me some clarification on the February 27th date? What that date is?
I thought the original thing that we discussed was March 13th. Was that just amendment to it, or this 27th date is something new that I don't?
I believe that was amendment to it. That was actually, the February 27th date that I put into here is what I got from Deb Keel on Thursday of last week. She actually thought the, where she originally called and thought, because she thought the deadline had passed. There was a, an amendment that she thought it would actually pass earlier this month. However, she did look, double-checked it, and she said the time for her to get it to there, to have it to her in order for it to get jacketed and sent there, she would need it by February 27th, what our request is.
So she has, has to happen by the date, or it has to be filed by that date?
Yeah. She has to have it, she has to have exactly what we are asking for by that date, as far as an amount, which is Thursday, this week.
I have, I'm confused, because the last meeting that I was at, it was, we were, we're proposing up to 2%. So it didn't have to, we didn't have to decide, because we couldn't decide. It was, it was up to the community of what was going to happen and what was going to be funded and not funded, and how much was going to be needed was still to be decided. But we had to get up to 2% to even, to move on.
May I respond?
Go ahead.
Indeed, that is exactly what we enacted, and in good faith, like we've done with a preliminary city budget, and then we've worked it down to a number that everybody can agree to. In this case, we've gotten word back from the legislature, if we word it that way, and they approve it, and then we turn around, we could go to that amount, and they're not happy to have it go to that amount. Even though we say, hey, in good faith, we're going to try to work it down, work it down, work it down, they were like, hmm, maybe. But if we approve it legislatively at that amount, you all could do that, and, and no.
So it seems to me that the way that they switched it to is not going to work, because they want us to do all the stuff that we did for the pool up front, and really we can't do that. We can't do that up front. So it doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
I fully agree. They, they, they reversed the, the process, and it's not logical anymore, but that's how it goes sometimes. It's not logical anymore the way it is.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Ms. President. Do we know how the Moorhead hearing went today? Anyone?
I have not heard, I have not looked at it, no.
I know they were proposing out to 2048 on theirs.
They're proposing what?
They're adding a half a percent, I believe, out to 2048 for a bunch of stuff. I just didn't know.
To your point about whether it's the amount of rate or it's the duration or what? And then even what it's being spent on? They want to know it's substantive items?
I don't know at all how that went. To, to clarify or add detail, Moorhead is asking for $75.5 million for an aquatic center, city hall, and library.
They're asking for $130 million.
Oh.
25 million plus bonding costs for regional community aquatics, 25 for regional library and city hall, 75 million for regional transportation, 1 million for construction equipment, regional inclusive playground, and 5 million for renovation of the regional trails. So it's 130, plus or minus.
And that's gotten a hearing today?
Yes. Well, that's, it was on the agenda for today.
What is the percentage that that would be?
Half a percent.
Half a percent. I, I just, I'm trying to figure out, to that comment, I'm trying to decipher, is it the, the gross amount of dollars? Is it the rate? Is it the length of time? Is it, what is it that would be the opposition?
The feeling that I've had, sorry, the feeling that I've had in visiting with them is that it's the rate. The 2% rate is high enough that they're saying it's the highest we would ever have seen in the state of Minnesota, and they just won't even listen to it, because it's so high.
That, that's what they conveyed.
But that's, that's just the feeling I've gotten over the, over the phone and conversation.
That's what I was told also.
But I guess, and I guess I will, to the mayor's point, though, they, they said that it's never been asked before, so they, they don't really, you know, they're, they're making some assumptions based on some of the conversations they've had to a certain degree too, but it's, that it's never been asked before. So it is an unknown to a certain degree whether, you know, what would really happen.
The sense I've gotten is the closer you get to a number like that, the less successful you are in getting it approved. That's, that's, yeah. In fact, I was told that even our 1% would be high. Not unheard of, but it would be high. And now hearing that Moorhead's at a half percent? And I think Bemidji's at 1%, and Breckenridge is at a percent, and Grand Rapids is at a percent, and, there's probably 20, I think there's 27.
There's 20, there's 20 cities that are asking for sales tax, local sales tax increases this year, just this year alone.
What's the highest you see of the asks?
Well, the highest ask is going to be, Hermantown is asking for a half cent increase to an already 1% local, so it'd be 1.5 total. And that would bring their, their rate to 8.875%, which would tie Duluth for the highest in the state.
What's Bemidji asking? Is that one or a half?
Uh, Bemidji is, sorry, my hole punch cut it off, but Bemidji's asking for a half percent increase for 10 years.
Okay, because they also have a half percent transit tax that they have too.
They're already at 7.875.
They're, they're at that now.
They're at 7.875, they're asking for a little half.
What's, what's frustrating is that we, you know, follow their rules and follow what we're supposed to be doing, and then don't allow us to even have a, you know, yeah, Congress. And it's, you know, to the point of, you know, the way we did the pool and did fundraising, got the vote, I mean, worked out, you know, great. And that's, the change last year in the law just makes it more, doesn't look like it's local governing, it's state governing that will let you do what you, what we think you can do. And that's really frustrating, you know. They don't live here.
And the difficulty is that you go to Hermantown and they're, you know, they, they can do a half a percentage for what we want to do in 20 years, because they have the big box stores. But if the community is willing to pay that 2%, I mean, let the community vote on it. And I'm speaking as a resident, 1609 A Street. As a resident, we should, like you said, we should get to decide.
I guess the thing where.
They want the community support, we can get the community to select still.
So the question is as a hand, if we want to change anything, we have to have it to Deb Keel by this week. If we don't want to change anything, tell her no, get a house bill, whatever we need to get going, move it forward, and we leave it. I guess that's where we're standing, and that's what we need to do, decide what we want to do. Mr. Grassel?
And I'm afraid if we do that and it dies, then, then we're out another two years, correct?
Yeah. We could go, we could go back.
We're out two years, which then inflates the cost of what we're, what we're talking about. So if we go, if we go for a 1% for 15 years, does that even cover the cost of fixing the Civic Center and fixing the VFW arena? With the parking lots that need to be done? be done for both, both facilities, the locker rooms for the Civic Center, the connection between the two buildings with the fireplace in the middle?
Oh, chest.
All of those? Trust me, I'm about ready to make a motion to kill this whole thing. And then, when our, when our ranks go when they go, we're going to have $12 million sitting at us, and we sit in dicker over a percent that goes on our levy, and we're going to have $12 million or $6 million in one year? That scares me. And every time we get close to doing something in East Grand Forks, we get close enough, then we always seem to find a way to pull back the reins on things. And that gets us to where we're at. It's just like the email we got from the gentleman that owns the business the other day. Why didn't you guys do this? Because every time we throw some money out like that, people get scared, and people get nervous, and this is why we're at where we're at. We can't even, we get, we can't do the, we cannot do the parking lot. We can't do, how are we going to do all this stuff without going and asking? And if that's the case, if we got to keep going back, we're going to push this thing down another two years, because there are so many things going on out in the community right now. So-and-so is saying this, so-and-so is saying that, I heard from this, I heard from that. It's, it's ridiculous. So I guess we either got to, we've got to either decide, are we going to go for it, or are we going to revamp it? Or are we just going to gas it and wait another two years and gamble? I love gambling. Let's gamble. Let's gamble for 14 million. And then put it on our, put it on the tax roll in East Grand Forks. Then we'll see how many people get in this building.
We can't order our home property taxes to go up. We absolutely cannot. Our home is already taxed more than it's worth. And that's ridiculous.
Question I have, you know, I see you have the 2%, 1.5%, 1% in the packet, 15, 30 years. Forgive me if you've done it already, and maybe I'm not seeing it. Did we ever look at 20 at one?
20 at one. 18, 19, 20.
We went, we looked at 30 at one, and 17.
I'm just asking, because I don't see that, that's why I want to know.
Well, and we looked at, when we did it, we did, we didn't do the 20. We did the 30, which is a max for 1%, is 17.7 million.
So let's say you're looking at 1%, let's go by what the mayor's saying, at 1% at 15 years, with the project, just for number one project, we have to raise 9 or 10 million on top of what's brought in, right?
Yeah.
I mean, for the new, for the new ice sheet.
24 million, that's on top of, number one project, which is 24 million.
We would need, on 15 years at 1%, our project funds would be $11.6 million. So we'd have to raise another 13 million.
13, yeah, excuse me.
And I would say, and Reed, this is probably a question for you. Do you see any opportunity to bring that cost down? You're closer to this thing than any one of us as for, like, combing through?
That's, that's not an easy question to answer, because I'm not in that field.
Maybe David wants to ask that question.
I mean, I think, are there ways to bring the number down from what the feasibility study is, looking at the comparable, comparable projects, what other communities have done? Understanding what the feasibility report tells us, yes, I think there are ways that we can save money. An example that I could use to that is the feasibility study the JLG gave us, their price to replace the boilers at the VFW arena that were failed when they did it. The, the study the mechanical engineer gave us was something, don't quote me, shouldn't say it, because I don't have it in front of me, but something like $200,000 to do that. We replaced that last year for $90,000. Okay, so now, don't take that for a grain of salt, that we're going to cut this thing in half by 50% just because we did it on that boiler. But are there design, design considerations that we can make when we get to a design phase, which we're not nowhere near at this point? Sure, yes, there are design considerations we can make. That's how Bodat built the arena for $6.8 million that they did. If you go to that report I gave you tonight, that their average price per square foot is $179 a square foot. They built that arena at a time when the rest of the state is building arenas somewhere between $215 and $240 a square foot. Yes, you can do that. Now, with that said, you need to consider what Bodat built. They built a precast, prefabricated concrete shell of a building that has no design features, no extra amenities, it's not heated, it's a shell of a building with locker rooms and ice sheet inside of it, and some, some nicer seating. It, it, I mean, it's a nice rink, it certainly is a nice rink.
And seating for 500.
But, and it's seating for 400 or 500 people. It's, it's a minimum. We already can't schedule activities to the liking of our participants in our Blue Line Arena, because it's cold. So to think that we can build a new arena in East Grand Forks that's not heated, we can't do that. We're kidding ourselves on that. So I'm giving you a long answer to a, maybe a short answer question, but yes, I think there are considerations that could be made if we can get this to a design phase. What that is and how much that is, I can't answer that. I have no idea how to answer that.
So they did one for 6.8 million, and it was completed in the last couple of years. It's not what we would want. We can come up with $20 million between our sales tax and our fundraising, plus or minus, 20 million. My challenge for this group, then, is to come up with a package that includes a new ice sheet first rate, along with hooking it up to the Civic Center, along with beginning the process of converting the VFW to some seasonal, all-year exercise facilities, parking, whatnot. Fit it into 20 million. And Reed, I'm not, I'm not hanging you here. What have we, and maybe, maybe you're not comfortable to say, are you comfortable to say kind of what we've spent on arenas through East Grand Forks history from our inception? If you're not comfortable to say, then please don't say.
If you let me look for it, I'll tell you.
The total dollars we spent on arenas from the day we started.
Are you taking construction or maintenance?
All of it.
These are not today's dollars. Civic Center, we spent about 3.185, and that's in old dollars. So when we built it in 1974, it was worth 1.2 million. But yet, some of that was, most of that was free labor. The VFW, we put in about 1.5. But as you can tell, we haven't put enough in, because-
So our total investment in arenas historically ever has been how much?
Probably $5 million.
$5 million.
And that's why they're broken.
So now we're considering a million, a $20 million expenditure, four times more than we've ever spent on arenas in our city's history, and that somehow is chump change. How's that doing it on the cheap? I don't understand.
Because they're 40 and 30 years old.
I get it. But we've done a lot of maintenance and upkeep on them since then.
Well, not a lot.
Oh, yeah. Look at the Civic, it's lovely.
Let me, if I can interject here one, one point here. So the, so if we did the, for example, the, the 1% at 15 years, and we did, that would be focusing on what we have. We wouldn't be adding an ice sheet at that point. We'd be basically fixing what we had. And, and other than some ADA, and we'd still be short, we'd have to come up with some fundraising worth of about 1.4 million roughly. With that, we, really, the only major changes that you would see would be the parking lots. The rest of it would be pretty much behind the scenes, there'd be some ADA compliance, but, and the, a lot of that cost is in upgrading both of the ice-making equipment and the flooring and that to get it, to get that all compliant. The one thing that I do want to point out, that it seems in my experience that even, like even the Bodat one, a lot of these, a lot of these ice sheets, when they, when they do, these arenas, when they do get built, seems like they're, there tends to, it tends to be focusing around one major donor, and then there's a lot of backfill into that. I believe the Bodat one, they had a-
$6 million.
$6 million from, from a single donor. I know the Icon, they had, I believe Choice was the one that was kind of pushing.
Blue Line Club gave 3.5 million for that.
So they get, they get some, some bigger, bigger donations. Whether we could come up with that here in, in the city of East Grand Forks, I don't know. I, that's never really been explored to them. If there's somebody that's out there that has the capability and would be willing to, you know, put a, a large chunk for seed money on this to help kind of backfill some of that. That's just an unknown for me. But I guess we're, what I'm trying to say here is, if we're going to get to that second, that second ice sheet and stay at that 1%, there, it would be, we're talking about some things that aren't precedent. It seems like to me it would be an unprecedented fundraising amount here in the city of East Grand Forks. Whether it could be done or not, I'm not going to speculate to say, but it would be significant. We'd have to come up with, if that's the case, close to, probably close to $10 million, from my calculation.
Wouldn't you throw out the higher numbers, and you're doing the retrofit on the VFW, turning it back into a full-fledged hockey arena? We're not doing that. And the minute that it turns into a dryland fitness center, we don't need as much parking, right? We're not going to have the large crowds in there like we do now for a hockey game, or for any of these tournaments or anything. There's a way to rework that. The minute it becomes a dryland facility, no longer are we bringing it up to the spec for a hockey arena. That's money saved. That's the money that goes to the second sheet of ice, plus the fundraising that we can do to bring it to two sheets of ice right by the Civic with good locker rooms and the whole thing. It can be done.
Maybe else have any input? We've got to decide what we're going to do.
So what's going to happen? What happens if in October, when you fire up, the plant doesn't fire up? What are we looking at?
Better hope for seven, not 11.
Because that really could-
Fiscally, I don't have an answer for that. Is there an emergency way to put an ice sheet in when the compressors break down? Sure, there is. It takes some time to get whatever skid package that is, get it here, to get it hooked up, and it would cost us. I don't know what the number is. I've never asked. I'm afraid to.
How many, if I could ask of our council, has reached out to the business community? And if, as objectively as you can, tell me what the response was?
I can say, I mean, the people I've talked to have, have seen it both ways, I think. I think, and that's kind of reflected in some of this stuff. I think people understand that there's needs out there and that we want to have this, but there's concern too. I think your, your comments are way off base, that people are fearful, you know, of losing business or retail and all that kind of stuff. I, I've heard it. I, I will. I mean, honestly, I don't have any problem saying that. And I'm just saying is, one thing we did, we had a meeting with the EDA last week, and I asked Mr. Gordy to kind of push it up his channels, you know, before we have a meeting with maybe Chamber or whoever, to maybe do some analysis on tax, on sales tax capacity. What, how elastic is that economy? You know, there's, there's ways to find that out. I know people in the, in the business, whether it's, they're working for sports teams or whatever, they go out and they try to figure out what's, what are people's, you know, price elasticities on different things, you know? We don't know. We hear a lot of anecdotes about, this is going to drown me, you know? But we've both, we've been on both sides of that. You know, we hear that when we do street improvement stuff, everybody says it's going to kill them. When we do this, you know, every business says it's going to kill them. We hear that all the time. And we don't have access to all those books, so we don't, we have to just take them for their word. But it seems like we keep moving on, you know? Honestly, I don't know what the ramifications of 2% are. You know, it could be catastrophic, it could be nothing. You know what? I mean, we don't know. And I, I think, and like I said, I asked Mr. Gordy to maybe run that up his, his channels to maybe have a, a conversation with some folks that would maybe look at that, put together some sort of a study so that we would know what that is. And granted, that puts it on a macro level, it isn't each business, every individual person. I've had people tell me, you know, they figured their stuff out, and they say, well, it's going to cost me $30,000. Now, is that to you, or is that pass-through, or who pays that, or, you know, ultimately comes back to whoever ends up purchasing things, or, you know? So I would say, I mean, I've, I've been out there, I've tried to be honest with people, listen to what concerns are, and I don't think you can get forward on something this big or this small with, without having those conversations. But like I said, it hasn't all been positive, so people are against it.
As I've spoken with, with businesses, honestly, I haven't had one who said, you know, I, I get it. I need to, I see we need to go to 2%. I haven't had one. The least favorable, the, the most favorable would be, ooh, that could be a problem. And probably 90% have said, please don't let this happen. Please don't let this happen. And then lest I sound like I'm all pro-business, I, I kind of had my self chewed out, I'm watching my wording very carefully, by a resident who said, why are you so pro-business? Why aren't you worried about the taxpayers in our community? And I said, but you got to look at my whole analysis. I break it down as a family of four. And, and online sales, and, and home sales, and everything we do, you know, you offer on the internet, and it's going to hit the local sales tax. That's, that's part of the new legislation that's come through in the last couple of years to catch the online sales. And so it really will be just like we're talking about. If it's 2 million to our community, roughly a million will be carried by our residents, divided up by 8,600, whatever the new census is, and it's going to come down 400-plus per family per year for however many years it runs. It'll hit them like a property tax, because they'll be paying it. They just pay it by a different way. I'm very sensitive to that. I'm very sensitive to giving folks as much incentive to live over here as we can. I know we want to have amenities, to Clarence's point of some weeks ago. People choose to live in a community based upon the opportunities they have for recreation and other things. I totally get it. I guess I'm convinced, if we're, if we're very savvy in how we spend, that we can get this under 20 million and get a really, really nice outcome. And taking a million even towards Staus of, maybe of the fundraising. I'm committed to, to doing all of that, and I, I believe it can be done. Given, the Cullen was an 8 million, plus or minus, I know that was a few years ago finished. You go down the line, this is, this, this dollar is going to get us something amazing if we spend it wisely.
Mr. Vedder? Hey, I was saying, Gordy, if you want to say something to, from Mr. DeMers?
In response to Mr. DeMers, I have contacted a company that may be able to do this, and he is getting back to me this week. It's not, it's not as simple as looking to see what is it going to be, going to buy an item, or go to a restaurant, because it also has business-to-business impact, and it has impact upon the homebuilding market for people who buy from local lumber companies. And so we'll add 2% to parts of a house, which will, which may have impact upon the ability of people to buy that home as well. So there's a lot of intricacies, and he's looking to see if his software will allow him to make those types of analysis for us.
Right. And I, I agree. I mean, it's, there's lots of, I've always said that, while retail is one part of it, you know, we always talk about sales tax, because it's how we most often, you know, we're in contact with it as we go to a restaurant, and we go buy something at Hardware Hank or whatever. That's how we experience it. But, you know, Crystal Sugar does a capital improvement project that's, you know, $5 million, X% of that is materials that they probably have to pay sales tax on. So I, I mean, I understand that, and I think we need to have a understanding of that, but, go ahead.
But some of those business capital improvements are tax-free in Minnesota as well. So that adds another complication. If you're buying ongoing activities, if you're buying paper, for example, it pays to put things in, so it could have an impact there, the supplier is locally, or you have to pay use tax on it. But if you're buying equipment, for example, when Mayo, when Mayo bought the equipment for their, for that portion of their expansion, they were able to get a sales tax exemption from the state of Minnesota, because they bought the equipment in Minnesota. And we work with businesses to make sure that they can take advantage of that whenever it's possible. So, I mean, it's a really complicated- So, I mean, it's a really complicated analysis that we're trying to do something quick and dirty, but you guys something worth doing.
It's only going to cost 500 bucks, right?
Crystal Sugar also said they order everything from Morhead. That's what Dan Black said, is everything gets ordered through Morhead, so they would be paying the Morhead sales tax, not our sales tax anyway.
So they're going to pay for their arenas.
Right. Well, they do it on their city hall.
Right.
And that's, that is the problem, the one thing I, it drives me nuts about the sales taxes. It all goes to the state and then the only way for us to capture it is to tack on, on top and otherwise it all just goes into everybody else's stuff, you know? And that's, it's frustrating, you know, what we're trying to do.
I could just add a couple, I could add a couple comments. On the mayor, when you're trying to compare the sales tax to property tax, which now are not apples to apples. So when you talked about how it's going to cost the average person $400 in sales tax, the average family. So when we did that abatement bond, where we talked about if we had to do a property tax increase for 20 years at $50 million, a house at $250,000 valued at 250 would be paying an additional $335 in property taxes for the next 20 years. Okay, so if you took that at the 2% sales tax, that family would have to spend $16,750 in taxable sales every year, which is like $300 a week in taxable sales. I mean, yeah, when I have kids at home, I spend $300 on groceries, but that's not taxable. So you're really only probably going to get to that if you buy big-ticket items, you know, like a car or something else. So it, it's difficult when you, to put apples to apples when they're not apples to apples.
But somehow across the community, we raise a million dollars.
Right.
And that million dollars is distributed among those who make the purchases.
Correct.
And we're saying, if it's 2 million, half of it's coming from the outside and half from the inside. So we're saying our residents will pay a million dollars.
Correct, but they're getting a service for that. Once you increase your property tax, is a street sweeper going to come out one more time, extra every week?
But hear me, so they're still paying it. So my point is, they're still paying it.
But you are getting, you're getting a service.
Right.
Or a good out of it. You know, I'm, I'm getting service at a restaurant by paying that sales tax.
We're kind of getting past the, the more into the plausible framework.
The other thing I wanted to mention on the fundraising, when you're talking about fundraising and giving it to the baseball, we, we can't do that. There are restrictions on fundraising that if you, if you run, they run a campaign for hockey.
We would tell them upfront, what's the use of the funds on the fundraising side, not on the legislation side.
Right. And so if I, if, when you start that fundraising, if I want to give to the hockey, you can't take that money and give it to Bateman.
No, 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 no. It would be spoken of right upfront, this is a drive for this and this. It's a little easier to split it there than it is legislatively, is my point.
So do you have anything else you're going to address to his questions or comments? If not, I'm going to Mr. Vedder.
Well, the only thing I want to say is that I don't have a million dollars to give. And if I could, I would. But I can pay 2%, I mean, I can do all my purchasing in East Grand Forks. I can do my purchasing online and that money will come to East Grand Forks. So I feel like I'm doing my part. I think that's what the citizens of East Grand Forks want to do. We're not asking money from the legislature. You know, yes, we'll take care of this ourselves, but give us the means to do it. When the state, you know, legislature changed this, they talked about right in the article how it's really an unfair advantage to the big cities because they can put a half percent and collect the most. So now how can they tell us, you know, you want to do the same project at Hermitown, but we aren't going to let you do the 2%, even if the citizens want to do that.
Okay, I'm going to get into, we're getting more.
I'm done.
Yeah, because we're getting more into the debate part of it rather than, yeah, that's more of a council debate.
It's a decision.
Well, but it's a council debate. That's more of a policy decision.
Okay, so we're here to decide whether we want to leave the package the same and hand it to our state representatives or if we want to adjust it. I'm proposing then that we adjust it down to the 1%, leave all the projects in there and just stress to them that you guys put the cart before the horse, so you're the first step in this whole process. If you wouldn't have done that, we would have went out and we would have gotten the fundraising all lined up and had that whole package lined out for you ahead of time. You're just putting yourself first, so you're the first step in this process now. So prove our 1% and the four projects. We'll go to our citizens and see what they have to say, and then we'll, we'll do the design, we'll do the fundraising and get the project done. But we need your 1% now upfront.
So what, and that is a question I have for both. What's the package look like? So four projects, that total, how much?
Thirty-some million.
Thirty-two million.
For 1% though, but that's like 50 years.
It's implied that we'll cut it down.
You're not using the 1% to pay for the whole thing then, though. You use 1% for 20, 25 years, and now you're saying, okay, this is our shortfall now. We recognize that, so now we're going to go out and fundraise for that shortfall.
So at 1%, what's the total dollar amount sales tax is?
Depends on how long.
Like 25 years, I think.
30 years, 17.7, so we can give her 25.
So at 1%, can you, what's 25 years?
You can't go up beyond 30 years.
Probably close to 14.
You're asking 25 years? I thought you asked, okay, my apologies.
Carla, if we name the term of 25 years best we can tell, how long would it take to pay it off?
Okay, so what was the question?
Okay, we'll name it at 25, but we're going to probably see some growth in sales tax revenue. That's kind of what we projected always. So we say up to 25 years and, and what's your best guess of how soon it would actually pay?
I agree with you, but all they will give us is 15 million. Because they all only give you what you have coming in now. So if you have a bond and the most you can have a bond for is 30 years. So at 1%, it's 30 years and we only can get 17.7 million. That's what you get for 30 years with 1%. And yes, you could pay it off in 20 years, which we, at the 2%, we said, we have a bond for 30 years, but we would pay it off in 25 years at today's rates for the question.
Yeah, the issue with, with the 15 versus the 30 then, that it, you know, it doesn't come close to doubling. It adds about another six, roughly 6 million going from 15 to 30. And unfortunately with how it's, the majority of that extra time goes for paying for interest in it. So I mean, granted, if this, if it comes up and you're, you get more in, you can pay it off earlier and you wouldn't pay as much interest, but it, the cost of that money goes up quite a bit.
Just so everybody knows, and this is for all in the community to see, probably everybody does know, but the way this works is we essentially borrow the money and we call it bonding for the money, and the interest rate is around 3.5%. Then we use annual sales tax revenue to pay off the bond, which is sort of like paying off a bank note. That is why when you double the term, you do not double the amount that you have to spend, because the longer you amortize, the more interest payment you will do in the total life of that note. So a 15-year note is a beautiful thing with regard to total interest paid, and then the longer you go beyond that, you see the interest rates start to escalate because some of your early payments are really heavily skewed toward interest payments according to the amortization table. And that is why you double the term and don't get double the money to spend is because you're paying a lot more in interest in the life of that note.
So 1% for 15 years gets you almost the fixed refrigeration, mechanical, HVAC, parking lots.
Yep.
Unless you figure it out.
For what it's, if I can, for what it's worth for me, looking at 1%, if 1% is the number that we're going to talk about, trying to keep moving forward on. Backing up a little bit, a question was asked about business owners and who you've talked to. I've had a few conversations with business owners. I thought maybe the most down-to-earth conversation that I've had, the most, that I felt like I walked away with getting the most out of the conversation was, the gentleman started with saying, the thing that stinks about this for East Grand Forks compared to other communities is that if we had twice as many businesses in this town, we could be at half percent, just like all these other communities are, and have our, these projects be paid for in the same amount of time that we're looking at what a 1% would get us. He said, what I fear is that we already feel like we don't have enough businesses in this community. We want to attract more and we want to have more. I, I've learned to live with the 1% and I think a 1% is fine. We could continue to get by with that. I fear a 2% would not only say we are no longer going to get business to come to East Grand Forks, but we're going to see more businesses leave the community. That was, I felt like a very heart-to-heart, down-to-earth conversation I had with a business owner in the last week about it, and that saying, 1% is fine. We've done, we've done just fine with 1% and we think we can continue to do just fine with 1%. I wish we had more businesses so it didn't have to be 1%. But if it goes up to 2%, that really concerns me. So that's just a conversation I can share. Going back to that, I think if we're going to look at 1% and the interest payoff, the debt service, I, I wouldn't like to see us, even speaking personally, I wouldn't like to see us take that out for 30 years because we'd end up paying almost as much in interest as we would in projects being completed. If we think 1% is the number that we can live with, we, maybe it's longer than 15 years, maybe it's 17 years or 20 years, something along those lines. But find the number, and I know, I wish we had that tonight, but we don't. Find the number that we feel like is that right point to Mayor Gander's assessment of that we're completing the projects, we, we are garnering the revenue that we think we can to complete the projects we, we want. Let's figure out what that number is going to be as soon as possible so that we can turn around and go back to our community and say, okay, this is what we have a chance to work with. What can we accomplish within that? To, to Mr. Vedder's point, let's, let's, let's continue this conversation of the projects and let's say, okay, we want to pass a 1%, we want it to be for 20 years and we think we can make 15 million off that. Let's discuss design. If it comes back, we need $20 million to get those projects done, then let's strategically figure out between now and when that's going to happen, how to find that extra 5 million. Right, 5 million's probably lofty. It maybe is very lofty unless a donor that we don't know about comes forward. But at least we have a direction to go with this. I fear the longer we go through community forums and into public meetings without an answer or a direction, or we're kind of almost out in the clouds on what we're discussing and doing, it's just going to continue this like, almost the confusion or potential for divide amongst our residents on what we're, what we're discussing. I think that we're, we're at such a broad range of, of opinion right now that we need to have a number so we can kind of start to cycle that back to reality a little bit. And that's just, I guess, my two cents a little bit is maybe as a point of direction or, or a way that we go with this. If 2% is not even realistic, we've got to think real with it.
Reed, thank you for your candor. I guess I, I really think 5 million in fundraising is very doable. We bring in the right professional to guide the process. I think we see the need, just what you said, Reed, the need becomes very evident. If this is what we can expect into sales tax revenue that we can use to pay off the bond, this is the dollar we have to work with and this is the scale of the project that we intend to complete. That need right there, that need which would, would be very, very evident, that is the stuff of, of where people respond favorably under the fundraising. I'll step up. I think, you know, every, every one of us that loves this community and loves our kids and our, our older folks that want to walk recreationally at the VFW when it's a multi-use facility, I mean, this is for everybody. This is for the baseball players in the spring and the lacrosse players and, you know, to have that facility, wrestlers in there and whatnot. This is for our whole community. I'm, I'm ready to embrace it.
Mr. Vedder?
Thank you. We still let the process work out. If we adjust this and we say 1% to the state, now you still present all the projects to the citizens and they vote on it this fall. And they might vote the Civic Center and the VFW project out and we're left with the ballpark and Lefae Park and the Greenway, you know? And then those are what we work on. But you let the process work then and let the citizens vote. If they vote all four in, now we know where our fundraising is going to be. And the projects might get stretched out a little longer than what our timeline is, but that's where we're at. Let the process work.
But will that process get vetoed? That's my question. So if we go and ask them for all four, will the process be vetoed? That's my question.
But what do you mean by veto?
Well, if we, if we make, if we make a, a motion and it's set and we go 1% for all four, I heard the mayor say that he only wants one thing on the, on the ballot.
I will gladly respond to that. I didn't veto it when we did four and we did two and we did 30, and our, our effort was to, is to start to drill it down. I don't intend to veto this if, if we can get down to that one and, and get going. Now, we'll continue the conversation. I, I really seriously, to, to our good citizens who are pretty tuned in, but I mean, really we're, we're handling the pulse on this thing, I think it'd be weird to show up in the ballot box looking at four tax increases, even under one heading, and vote yes on all four. I feel like we could end up, you know, to your concern, we've got these compressors about to fail, the floors that got to be cut out and put back in with new, new tubing for the, whatever the new coolant refrigerant's going to be. We're going to miss it. The window opens and closes and we got a great boat ramp and maybe some trail improvements and a beautiful ball diamond. But we've decided here around this table, it's time to fix our arenas. And oh, by the way, if we're fixing arenas, let's set them up for the next 25 years that we can be proud of. I think that we've decided that is a big priority and we'll find ways to fund these other things, right? So please know, I love the boat ramp, I love the trail system, and I love a long-term plan for the maintenance of these things. I love our ball diamond estows. That I think's going to happen right away also, if we do it right. My only concern, I wouldn't veto it. I, I appreciate the willingness to consider 1% on behalf of our residents, on behalf of our businesses, and we'll continue the conversation internally. Honestly, if, if we believe, and our people will tell us, you know, we have a great architectural firm guiding us here. Have they ever seen a ballot item that looks like this? How'd it go? We may have on our fundraising side a professional that can help guide us through that question. Even our legislators will help decide, you know, here's the thing, that ballot question is good or might create some confusion or an undesired outcome.
But, and I think I'd want to object and, you know, to Mr. Grass's point, the thing is, the conversation we have had, him asking the questions, is you had made that comment if it was at 2%. You wouldn't want, you, or whatever percentage it was in the past, you didn't want four questions on there. I mean, that's, you stated in work sessions and stuff like that. So you want, he wanted the clarification and understanding if we made a considered effort to go down to the 1% and go for the four, that.
I will gladly let it move ahead.
Down the road going, no, I'm going to veto.
I would gladly let it move ahead. I would not veto that effort right there.
Just so you understood that's.
I, I think that's a, a good step. And again, my hope is to see this thing pass and to see first-rate facilities built, better than we've had maybe ever. And I believe inside of this conversation, this group can make that happen.
Lisa, your comment?
Yeah, I, I am still, and you guys are confusing me the more that you talk because is it the mayor that's going to veto this or is it legislation or what? Because at last season, I'm glad we were going ahead with up to, up to 2%. Because if we go, if we stay at the 1%, that's basically fixing, fixing what we already have, just 13 million. Is that correct?
No.
What is it, just to fix the arenas?
13 million.
Okay, so we have 4 million left to work with, with that 1%?
No, worse, minus.
No, the, the 1%. If we're, if we're going for 1% for 15 years, it would be, is 11,630, so we'd be roughly 1.4 short.
Sure. But if we went for the 30 years, that's 17.7.
And we've still got to talk about, A, the fundraising and B, the savings of not rehabbing the VFW.
You're using current numbers. Yep, correct. So if we're, if someone's going to make a motion to change anything, are we talking about 1% at 30 right now? And then we, we're not committed to the 30 years until we have to have the ballot question in August, right? I'm just asking.
It depends on how much you're going to borrow. If you only want to borrow.
I understand that, but I'm just asking if we're committed to 30 years when we ask to vote through the committee.
So I'm sorry, I'm a linebacker, so I knew that answer. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
As far as I know, we're not committed to the 30 years. It's whatever we say we want to borrow.
In August, because our final verbiage has to be there.
Resolution, that's when we finalize our ballot, which, which projects we're voting for.
So I think tonight if we make a change into it, it would be just the percentage dollar amount, would not be anything else, correct? dollar amount, would not be anything else, correct? Is that what we're all understanding?
If that's the will of the group, you know, I'd rather see a shorter term and that continues on through the conversation. But if it's the will of the group to go to 1% at 30, then I would let, of course, you guys are smart, and we'd let it go on to the next step. And if we can, again, I'm really convinced that we can get a really nice project for a dollar, but that would be less than that, and then go for the fundraising. Bring in a professional, set the goal, start the contacts. I mean, they come in the door with some good, strong contacts also, whether it's the naming rights, sponsorships, all the rest of it. But whatever the group decides, would I rather see a 20-year or 15-year term? Absolutely. If the group feels pretty strongly to stick at 30, I respect that.
I have a question, Reed. So in the, it says number one arena, 13 million, fix current issues, bring each building to code compliance. Talk about code compliance.
Yeah, so that, it's rounded up to 13 million, but in your packet tonight, all the colored pages are the numbers from GLG. That's just short of 13 million dollars. That essentially fixes the arenas. It addresses not just refrigeration and parking lots, it also addresses the mechanical systems, the fire code system, so that the fire alarms, the VFW has no fire alarm system in a period right now. It would wire and hook up all access to those components of it. The ADA component of it would be addressed through their line items for the greater area of the Civic Center, with the exception of locker rooms. It wouldn't fix any mechanical or ADA in locker rooms because they're still going to be in the basement under that 13 million dollar project. So...
Would that, that doesn't include an elevator, obviously?
It does.
It does include an elevator.
It does include an elevator?
Yeah. They have a line item, a single line item for that. It does not address locker rooms, though.
No locker rooms.
And the code of the law.
I guess one of my fears is if you push it out to 30 years for $6 million, you've got 30 years that you can't raise that money again.
That's it.
But I mean, but, that was one of the points of why you go with big and you get everything done at once. And then by the time that's done, all of our buildings in town are, at max, 50 years old, our city buildings, you know. I mean, there's a couple senior center kind of stuff or whatever, but, you know, this building, the library, the fire hall has been revamped, the police station has been revamped. So...
And it's 50 years old by then.
That's what I'm saying, it's 50 years. But that's, I mean, 50 years old, this building should be 200 years old before it falls apart. So I'm just saying, but then you could go back and do stuff. Now, you go small, that's my words, smaller package, whatever, and you try to stretch it out and just try to pick off the little stuff, I think within 15 years, you're going to be looking for what's the next thing. And you're going to have baseball issues. And I've said from the beginning, I don't think that we should do the trails on here. I think we should fund those a different way. I think there's other funding sources that we could tap, both in the state and I've said we should...
Well, I think for all these projects, there's going to be other sources. But that's why you leave all the projects the way they are. Your 1% sales tax is just one piece of the whole financing package then. Then you look at, okay, what are our other state grants that we could apply for, private grants that we could apply for, naming rights, other donors, big donors that we can go to, and you work up the whole package then. But that can't be done until after the vote in the fall.
That's why...
If we get the 1% from the state and we get all four packages passed by our citizens in the fall, now you got to work up the whole package. How are we going to finance the whole thing?
And that's why I was asking if you want to leave, just change the percentage for now and then by August, get the verbiage. That's why I'm asking. I'm not saying that's where we're going to end up. I just, that's why I'm asking if that's what we want, our direction, we want to do and then work through the process. I'm not saying that, oh, this is what we're doing. I'm just, so we can get this change in there, because we have to have it in by the 27th. Do we do that? Or do we leave it at the 2% and not do anything at all? That's what we need to make a choice tonight if we want to do anything.
Ron has a hand up.
The only thing, and this is me as a citizen, the only thing that I think is faulty in our logic of keeping all four of them on there is what happens when the arena is voted down and then they, and then the compressors go out, now you've got a 13 million dollar problem. That's the, and I think everybody understands that the arenas need to be fixed one way or another. That's getting to the mayor's point, because I don't necessarily agree with everything the mayor has said tonight either. But I think this group understands that focus, that that needs to be done, and then these other projects were kind of gravy. And I think that if you don't at least prioritize that, you could end up with a terrible result in the fall. And all of you are here, are actually been elected to make these types of decisions. And if you want to leave everything to the citizens to shotgun it out, well, have at it. But I think, I think that is a mistake in and of itself. And that's just a personal opinion, not a legal opinion. But I think you could hurt yourself terribly by doing that unless at some point in time in the meantime, you eliminate them.
I think that the fundraising thought, especially, and this isn't necessarily our fault, but the way the legislature is drawing this out, like, is rosy because, I mean, if you're looking at getting large angel donors, large, usually they come to you with the project that they want to do, and then you help them with the city side of it. It's not usually the other way around. You go push out what you want and then go out and they just say, oh, yeah, you're right, I have 5 million dollars sitting around or whatever. So that's one of the problems I see with getting that large donor. I mean, other than naming rights, but let's be real, we're not going to get, you know, Choice Wellness Center money for the Civic Center. We're just not, you know. So I just, I think the fundraising and all that stuff, I've been a little bit, I know I've added it in my talks or whatever, but I think, I mean, if you're talking, I don't know even what it is, but I'm a little more bearish on what we can do. I will say, if we settle at 1%, I think we have preserved the goodwill of the business community and the opportunity for fundraising is going to be infinitely greater than if we'd have stuck hard line to the two. Which is funny, because if you can't raise a million dollars in sales tax, but you can go and give 5 million in fundraising, it kind of says something too, so. It's like anything else, though. I'll give you the shirt off my back, but don't take it. Right? I'll give you the shirt off my back, but don't come and take it. That's what I think goes on.
What was the reason that you couldn't have done like, say, one for 20? You're saying bonding, but can't you bond for 20?
They just didn't have the number just ready.
Oh.
But yeah, I think that's...
I missed, I missed that it was either 15 or 30.
No, it could be anywhere.
I just don't know what...
No, no, okay.
20 is a nice number.
You could go one and a half, be in the middle. And nobody has to do one and a half and then vote on it, but you should have a little cushion so we can go up and say, this is what we want to do. Because if you're only doing the 1%, you might not be able to, you really don't have anyone to do that second rate when then somebody steps up. How do you plan for it?
Be honest with us, Carla. We originally said up to 2%. And I, all along, have never said I'll do more than 1%. And I don't think you would have gotten the in-vote out of the council for a full 2% either.
I'm just looking at it back. That's like that cushion when we do our levy.
I think we were all leaning for the one and a half, the one and a quarter.
One?
I think the one and a quarter would give us a little extra cushion.
So we need to decide what we're going to do, because, I mean, all these conversations, and I think everybody knows that today's 24th has to be done 27th. So I guess we need to make a decision if we want to change the percentage and have discussions and have our final ballot down to them beginning of August, once we have all these conversations with our citizens. I think that's where we need to go.
I'm a little worried about that if we stick with the bare minimum with fixing the arenas, with the code, that we're not, we're not even going to get to that bottom of those locker rooms. Those locker rooms are terrible.
Awful. Air quality is bad.
So, I mean, somewhere along the line, I'm willing to move, but the problem is, is that we've got to be able to figure out if we can get those locker rooms fixed at that Civic Center.
Let's, let's really, if we come out of here, let's say we do come out at 1, let's work really, really hard to bring common sense into the design process.
Well, I'm about ready to throw the Lefae Park and the trails out and make a motion. And let it go to those people.
How would you go with that?
I'd leave them all in. Just let the process work.
You guys have any comments?
Reed, what's the difference between the 880,000 for the ball fields and the 2.5 million?
You know, they're just estimates, but the 880,000, I think we could redo the infield on both fields so that they had proper drainage or regraded so that basically they'd be grass field still. They'd be there as they stand today and they'd just have...
So you'd leave them at this?
Better drainages on the infield.
Reed, if we were to take the current number one field at Stouse, I mean, and you can't really answer this, but take the number one field, make it nice, I mean, some, some just good, normal improvements there and try to somewhat recreate that field as a second field with lights and some stands and backstop, really is what we were looking at? Any ballpark idea what cost factor we'd look at there? No.
No.
In all reality, we, if you're going to do that, you need to get those poles out of that playing field. I mean, those have been...
In the existing top game field?
The main...
It is no fun running into those.
No. I mean, it's just...
Does that have fencing around the entire complex or no?
Does what have fencing around that?
The 880,000 or the...
No.
The 2.5 million?
The 2.5 million, I think would have enough to get fencing on...
Fence arraying all the way around the entire...
Yeah, fence in the whole complex, yeah.
And a clubhouse?
Yeah. The 2.5 million would be the second field right now. We call the Babe Ruth Field. We think that could turf that entire field, build a clubhouse. That would become the main field.
You'd turf it?
Turf the entire field, build a clubhouse, fence in the entire complex, and then make improvements on the main, today's main field to get those light poles out of the field of play.
I'd like to see how far you could get at Stouse Park with a million dollars. Where I come from, that's still a pile of money. Pretty sure we haven't spent a million at Stouse.
Never.
We also have any comments?
I think the last comment I would have is Chad's concerned about the locker rooms at the Civic Center and, you know, how that all can fit within the dollars. I think what I'm looking for from all of you guys tonight is a direction on the percentage that you're willing to see us try to bring to a vote in the fall. And that that would be our job, my job between now and then, is to get back together at these community forums and get with people that use the buildings and figure out how to best, and then, of course, report it all back to you guys and figure out how best to use the dollars that we could have available. To Mayor Gander's point earlier, if it's 15 million dollars, let's say, pull it out of the clouds, it's 15 million, we've got to be able to get a lot done with 15 million dollars, whether that's an addition of only locker rooms at the Civic Center or it's finding a way to prioritize the dollars spent and add on that new arena and, you know, prioritize what happens at the VFW as fundraising becomes available. You know, there's so much to still hear from this community. I think we just have to find a way to keep it moving forward right now instead of just put a stop to it at all. And I think a lot of it comes back to the arenas, is asking yourselves, if we, if we can't get something to move forward this year on this, these, specifically the arenas, then what's your plan B? You know, where do you go from here as a community is the biggest concern that I've got right now with that. Because there's a cost coming. We all know that. The cost is coming. One day or another, it's going to be here, so.
So do we, I'll make a motion that says we'll do a 1% for 15 years or 15 million dollars, whichever comes first, to cover the current arena issues at the Civic Center and VFW and the baseball fields at Stouse Park. Period. Question on the motion. Can I question the motion before I second it?
Usually you have to.
Does that leave room through fundraising to put the second sheet of ice by the Civic?
No.
So your motion excludes that possibility?
All I'm talking about is sales tax.
See, I feel we really want to come out of this with that door wide open for putting the ice sheet, saving some costs here and there.
You just said you want 1% in 15 years. I just gave you 1% in 15 years.
Right on. However, I believe there's fundraising potential and cost saving.
But that doesn't have anything to do with sales tax. You can do whatever you want.
Let's, he has a motion and let's go, see if there's a second.
Go ahead. Someone want to second that?
No.
Okay. See...
You're going to second it, Chad? Okay, there's a second. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
I don't think that's why we came. We didn't come for that outcome. And no one in this room is ready to say that's the outcome we want, or at least not the majority, I don't think. Because there's this wide-open door for fundraising and cost savings that we can, these numbers are not fixed, they're not etched in stone, these are not contractor bids. There's a lot of savings to be found.
So what would your, what would it look like then? You can't just say 1% indefinitely until we get whatever we want.
So it'd be 1% for a number of years and then with the fundraising...
But you have to say term and a dollar amount.
Right. But you also specify the use to repair our existing arenas.
Yes, you have to say the use also.
So the use would be to repair the Civic up to spec and...
I mean, if you read the resolutions, they're way more general. It's to improve Civic Center, to improve baseball field. That's all you got to put. I mean, that's, I mean, it says in their resolution is to improve City Hall, to...
Right on.
I mean, it doesn't have to be down to every detail.
So in other words, that was my question. Your motion leaves open the possibility of constructing the second ice sheet by the Civic?
Sure. If people want to, I mean, if we're going to be limited...
Perfect. It's the only clarification.
You just have to figure out how to get the other 11 million dollars or whatever.
Or some cost savings. Thank you. I just needed that clarification.
I mean, I want everybody to be clear. If we think we can do a 1% in town and 15, I personally would rather do, on a 1%, I'd rather do 15 years than 30. That, I mean, I mean, I know what the repayment looks like, but I'll push it up to 15 million just based on inflation or luck or whatever.
Yep. I like that.
And then you would have 15 million dollars max that you could pull out.
The percentage raises a certain dollar amount irregardless of whether we paid off in 15, 20, 25, or 30, correct?
Correct. Just that when we do the bonding numbers, they look at what your current rate of collection is. So when we looked at 1% for 30 years, we looked at 85,000 a month. So you could get 17.7 million dollars for that. But if we collect more, which we have, it might get paid off in 20 years or 15 years if you collect enough. You just have the bond for 30 years and so you can borrow more money.
You can take out another bond in three, does the legislation have to cover the bond only or like, say...
They'll cover bond interest, but...
No, but I'm saying like, could you, say you pay it off and you've allowed for 15 million dollars and say you take out a bond for what you can, the 11.6, and say you do that in 12 years for some reason. So you have three more years under your legislation and 3 million dollars or 4 million, 3 million dollars. You could go out and bond again, right, for that other...
I don't know what, I don't know if you can.
But they're asking for what we change the bond.
Under the previous, I don't know if they made that change here or not.
Or could you refinance that bond?
You have to, you have to even put down what you're going to bond, what you expect, your interest and all that to be. They changed that in there too, so that's why we sent it there. We had on there what we had for construction dollars and expected bond costs. Where before you all you had to say, we want to have 15 million dollars with 1% sales tax. And they would assume that you would pay the bond interest...
That's what I'm thinking, Chad.
Maybe it was 15 or 20 years.
20.
Well, I'm just saying, they changed the law. So like with the pool, it says on there, we could collect 1% to 30 years if we didn't have enough to pay for it. we could collect a 1% to 30 years if we didn't have enough to pay for it in 10 years. But they changed the law, so you have to state that. And that's why it's in our resolution, stated that way.
Just a second.
And I don't know if they accepted the other or not. We just went by the direction, we went by what the attorneys, we went by what the league told us to do, and put the bond costs in there.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
Would you consider 1% for 20, and probably it'll pay off closer to 15? But if you set the top limit at 20 for 1%, would you consider such as that?
Thank you. Sorry. I'm doing a little research.
Why is he doing research? Anybody else have any comments or questions?
If we pass this, the states accomplish it without them even voting on it, because now we've whacked off two of the projects that they didn't have to vote on either.
That'd be lovely. We'll find another way to fund those things. Maybe even the DNR on the boat round. I still think the DNR will come
It doesn't preclude us from not going after DNR, even if we leave these projects in this.
But only if it would affect either the approval by the legislature or by the voters. That's the only concern.
Let the legislature just whack it out.
Any other questions or comments before I move it on to a roll?
I just wanna see one thing.
So did you leave your motion alone, Mr. Demers?
I have for, please give me two seconds here while I'm doing a little
The other thing to remember about the other two projects that we're talking about is both of those are potential projects we can apply for legacy dollars for. We have applied for legacy dollars on, but we do still need a local match on that. That's a consideration that I don't think should be left out, is that we don't have local match funding for those projects for legacy applications right now. That was kind of the impetus of having it here as a sales tax anyway, is hoping we wouldn't spend 3 million on it of our own money, but that the sales tax would bring a local match aspect to it.
Part of the funding package.
So in your motion, Mr. Demers, you said 1% at 15 years, and you indicated the use, but are we indicating the use on this, or are we just changing the percent and the
I just had the two uses.
Not just amending the percentage and the term, amending what is indicated on the use. I just wanna make sure everybody's understanding.
I guess, I mean, we could allocate them however we want. For 15 million, I guess I would say, I don't know, 13.5 and 1.5 million?
I'm not asking you to change that. I'm just saying, you're saying only arenas to bring them up. That would not be adding?
Right.
I couldn't say that.
Well
Megan, do you have the
I'm saying the option one of the arena projects.
Number one project.
The one that we could afford doing this.
So the number one project was the estimated cost of 24 million?
Okay, so
No.
The motion I have, and correct me if I'm wrong, is I got 1% for 15 years or 15 million dollars to cover the current issues at the Civic, the VFW, and Stouse Park.
That's what made me ask. Are you leaving open the possibility of turning the VF into a dryland sports facility and building another ice sheet by the Civic, and you said yes?
Sure. But it's, but we don't, we're not bonding, or we're not raising the tax revenues for that, I guess. I mean, I don't, to me, I look at, yeah.
We wouldn't fix the V and then turn it to dryland a year or two later. We wouldn't do that.
I think the best way, for my sake
I don't understand why we have to split them up, because like, Moorhead's got associated building costs for regional library and city hall complex.
But you have to send a resolution, because the resolution says we have
I'm reading right off the resolution, right here.
Oh, sorry.
It's one thing we've found, is that every city did it a lot different. There's not much consistency to how the cities
You're saying, Reed, what you would like to see?
Rather than the words of Megan, rather to fix the current issues at the Civic Center and VFW arena, I'd ask that it say to cover repairs and improvements of the city ice arenas.
That's what I would say.
Love it. Love it. Love it.
And then, I guess, so I can move to 20 years, I guess, if that's what the, if that'll get this done. If I have a friendly second.
Well, Megan, did you catch the wording change?
Grassl, second the motion, so you
Yeah, I know.
I agree.
He's the one that told me to do it.
He's channeling Dick.
We need it read again, then.
So I appreciate if the motion got reread, so everybody understands what we're at.
Okay. So it changes from a 1% to 20 years. Are you gonna leave the 15 million in?
Is that
1% at 20 years or 15 million, whichever comes first, to, for the repairs and improvements of the city ice arenas and Stouse Park.
Let me check the money again.
That's a good one to move forward.
Well, you're saying 1% or 15 million. You're limiting yourself to 15 million dollars.
That just didn't, that doesn't calculate.
Because that's what it's gonna hit. At 20, it won't go past 15. Right?
Probably not.
Carla?
No, it probably won't, because 30 is 17.
If 20 is 17 and a half?
It's not.
I mean, 30 is 17 and a half?
Yeah, 15, I think 15 is still where you're at.
Yeah. You're right in there. Love it.
So that's 15 with, with just principal?
15 million dollars are bonding account, or bonding amount.
So that would be a lot of, 15 million.
Is that clear, or does that give you enough to go on?
Yeah, I can, I can run the numbers as well. I just don't have, like, if it's not 15 million, will you decide just whatever that is?
I would, could we add, like, language to say, or up to whatever finance decides is the max amount? Yes, yes.
Whatever 15 million
It's probably not gonna be 15 million, but
Probably 15.5, right.
Payback or 15 is
It's gonna be a smidge under 15, but it's good. I love it.
So the mayor's gonna personally raise him about 10 minutes.
How many years it will pay back for 15 million? So it could be 20, it could be 19. They only want a max of 15.
Why don't we do 1% for
No, I want a max of 20 years.
It would be 1% for 20. That's why I'm asking. The point is, why are we putting a dollar mode in there?
I have to put a dollar money in for the projects. Each project has to have a dollar mode to it.
But the project dollar mode is 26.2 million for those two projects.
But it's not, it's the bonded amount, not your project.
I wanted to make sure that you're okay with what is being proposed.
It has to be.
For the, no, for the dollar amount and the percentage, to make sure that we're, let's say that these get taken care of.
Because 1% for 20 years might get you 20 million.
But you can only use
But you can only go up to
You're gonna say 15 million, all you give is 15.
I understand. So why put 15 million in there? Figure out what the 1% over 20 years is gonna give us, and then that's the dollar amount we put in there.
That's why I said 1% at 15 million.
Well, for 30 years, it's 17.7.
At 30 years, it's 17.7. And at 15 years, you said it was 11.6. Between 11 and 17.
You can't say, I want to just collect tax for 20 years, and you get to use whatever that amount is. You have to set the amount that the max you will take.
Mm-hmm.
So even though you have 32 million, you can only say, I'm only gonna pass sales tax for 15 million, and once you give that, you're done.
I understand, but you can look at what 1% is gonna raise over 20 years.
Yes, I
And that would be your dollar amount then.
That would be the amount that you could bond, but you could
Yeah.
Because that's what I'm saying, is can you, could you say we just wanted to do something to pay as we went? Or something? Do you have to, does it have to, it has to be tied to a bond?
Very specific, because they changed that law to where they want dollar amount per project, like you said.
Right.
But I know that you could, I tried to find out the resolutions in the final, but you could put on there that we expect to collect donations of X amount to cover the other costs.
It's gonna get worse.
So you could say the Civic Center, you know, we're gonna have 15 million, we wanna do a 20 million dollar project, and 12 million is, the sales tax is gonna go to that, and we expect to collect the other donation. And I'm just confused, because the resolution was very, very specific. We worked with the league and with the attorneys, and I just wanna make sure we get enough information so we can get that in a resolution.
We don't have to meet again tomorrow?
I think we could try to get that together tomorrow, if we have direction on that. You know, the direction would be, we need to know what projects you wanna do, and we have a lot on this, we can figure out, if you want 15 million for 20 years, that 1%. Whatever you give for 15, how many years it gives.
So it's, it's basically 20 years, add 1%. 1% for 15, or 20 years, or 15 million, whichever comes first, is, and then it ends up as, and then to cover the two improvements as
So as a council, you could vote on that, and then with those terms, and then staff could put together the resolution as far as what that comes out to, and it would be considered already voted on. I don't know that we would have to bring it back to, if you vote on it tomorrow.
Well, they have the resolution yet. When we send in the legislature a new resolution, they should vote on it.
Yeah, I guess
You changed everything.
Got this.
Okay, yeah, let's
I think you should also include, and if there's any additional improvements, we're going to do fundraising, because then that leaves that open.
Anything beyond that dollar amount?
Yeah.
And soon enough, whenever we can, we should also articulate to our legislators, just as how they will present it, this is our fundraising goal, right? So I seriously challenge us to get the professional in, start that whole effort, set a fundraising goal, because that's gonna show our legislators, the whole legislative effort, we're committed to this. We, the whole community, are committed to this.
Okay. Is there any other questions or comments? It's time for a call.
The only thing is, is do we have to decide on a ratio, or like an exact
To each project.
For each project? Or is that, or is that, can we defer that to staff?
I think that can carry over time.
The council could even set that at a later date. Is, if you said, if you have what it's for, the three different, if you need to, if you need to adjust that, I think that's something that the council
But it has to be in the legislation.
I don't know that the percentage does, I think
No, not the percentage, but it's each project
You want a dollar revenue for each project.
Right.
Okay.
So I mean
And the estimated time needed, yeah.
Which you should have.
Okay.
Right? You have that breakdown of what it is, what
That's all for grabs now. It's all to be negotiated.
We're not fully funding any of the projects we're talking about, so we've gotta decide what goes to each.
What would the people be voting on?
Nothing yet. We haven't passed a resolution.
Okay. So do we need, as Mark Demers asked the question, do we need to designate that tonight? Yes or no?
Dollar allocation to each project inside of that amount. That's the question.
What I'm reading from the League of Minnesota says to pass the resolution includes the following: the proposed tax rate, a detailed description of up to five projects to be funded with the tax, documentation of how each project is economic, making an economic impact, the amount of revenue to be raised for each project, and the estimated time needed to raise those funds, total amount of revenue to be raised for all projects, and estimated length of time it will be in effect. So to those bullet points, I would say yes, we need to have an answer on the amount of revenue to be raised for each project.
Here's how I plan on amending. So I would say, I would give, so if we're looking to generate that 15 million dollar number, I would say, not knowing tonight, but I would say 13 million dollars to the arenas, and then not less than 1 million to Stouse Park, and I would offer the staff come up with the correct allocation of that last million dollars to, because we don't have the granular detail of that last million, plus or minus. I mean, it's somewhere probably in there, but I'm willing to let staff dictate what that last million allocation. I mean, if, I don't know if, you know, if you decide to put a fence up, if that means it's 400,000 dollars. I don't wanna say, well, it's 1.25. I think, I guess that would be my caveat. I don't know if that's too much leeway. I mean, it gives them latitude on a million dollars' worth of potential tax. I don't know if we're gonna get that much, but
I think that was kind of the idea, was it 2%? Because then we, more, more leeway when we got to August to adjust those numbers.
Yeah, I get it. I just, I agree with the mayor. We're not gonna get 2%.
But what I'm saying, we did a 1.25, and then we got the donation with the attention we're gonna get there, then we could adjust our donation
13 and 2 is my new offer. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. Megan can figure out what you just said.
Megan, need you to reread it, please.
Can you transcribe the last hour of our meeting, please?
Okay. So now, for my clarification, is that an amendment to the original motion?
Yes.
Hold on.
Second amendment to
Second amendment rights.
I won't dawn out and work with Megan tomorrow.
So we would have a 1% sales tax at 20 years or up to 15 million for repairs and improvements for the city ice arenas and Stouse Park, with 13 million for the arena projects, and 2 million for the Stouse Park project.
That's pretty accurate, unless
You need me to second that again?
Yes, please.
I'll second it.
So do I need to have
Any discussion?
Somebody call the question.
Nice work, everybody.
Do I need, I guess clarification for me. Do I need to vote on the amendments, or just a straight motion? Because you said
I think if they're friendly, I think
If they're friendly, okay. So we have a final motion, and any other questions? And now I'm going to roll call.
Better.
No.
Re-appeal.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Olsted.
Yes.
Grassl.
Yes.
Demers.
Yeah.
Motion is carried.
Come on, I wanna break a tie.
entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move.
If we make Grassl second, Megan Demers, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion is carried, means adjourns.
See you tomorrow. That's Al Lico's call.